You're live.
You're live, okay. All right, um, where is this? You're live. Oh, okay. Sorry, yes. I just really love you. We are back in public session. It's now eight ten P M. and we're going to go to our agenda. Here, do we have any of our retirees that showed up to the meeting?
No.
Okay, it's very hot out, so we're going to... Okay, so we're gonna read our retiree list. We will clap for them one final time, and then we have snacks for them, but they didn't make it. So we will take a couple of minutes break. First, we have Loretta Carmada, Maria Cardenas, Bettina Mailman Como, Lena Amendola, Susan Blair, Claude Dominique, and Melody Brabham. Thank you for your service. And next, we have a registration presentation from Ms. Damaris Lugo. So Ms. Lugo, we are always short on time, so forgive us for that. But if you could do your presentation about five-ish? A little less would be great, too. Okay, so Ms. Damaris, there's registration in the school district?
Yes.
And please tell... Is the mic... Does she need the mic?
No, I'll give her a...
Okay, please.
So good evening. I am Damaris Lugo, District Registrar, and I'm here to discuss the registration process with you. Currently, we have an online registration that's available. And we also have a registration packet that's available for parents to fill out if they choose to do that. The online registration link is available when parents contact me, and I will email them the information. Also, all of our registration requirements are listed on the district website under Registration. The requirements for registration are child's birth certificate, a parent's photo I D, proof of guardianship if the parent is not... If the parent of... Oh, I'm sorry. The biological parent is not the guardian of the child. So they have to provide proof that they are the guardian of the children. Proof of residency. Proof of residency, if you're an owner, you have to provide ownership. If you're a renter, you have to provide a lease and utility bills. And if you're living with someone, if you don't hold a lease, you have to do a shared residency affidavit and also provide two other additional proofs of address. A child's parent physical exam within the last twelve months is required, and the immunization records. That's very important because each nurse from each school has to medically clear the child to be able to begin school. They have to make sure they have all the immunizations and all the criteria that's required by the state of New York. The dental exam is also required, but not for registration. They have about three months, I think, to present it directly to the school nurse. I do attempt to collect it upfront. There's a release of records form that parents should fill out so that I can contact the prior school when they're transferring to a different school, so I can get their school records, their transcripts, report cards. So anything like that. And we always ask parents to provide anything they have upfront, the last report card or anything that they may have, I mean, P, transcripts, and the report card. As I mentioned already, the school nurse has to let you clear the child. And also part of registration, that's not really part of the registration process, but it's also withdrawals. A lot of times, it's important for parents to let us know that they may be moving out of state or choosing a private school. Sometimes we don't know that information right away. We tend to show them marked absent because the parents don't let us know. So that's something that's really important, too, that we should get a signed exit form from the parents.
So thank you. Share a lot of information. I do, and it's something the board has been talking about. We just talked about it very, very briefly, looking at bilingual programming. Do we have a lot of immigrant families?
Yes, and I do speak Spanish. So I'm able to help them out and provide the information in Spanish as well.
Do you find that our immigrant families need supports more sometimes?
Yes, yeah. So I try to schedule appointments with them a little longer so that I can, if they have trouble filling out certain forms or things like that, that I can spend more time with them.
So one of the other things that we're doing here tonight is the Nettie Jackson Award. Do you want to talk about the Nettie Jackson Award? I'm sorry.
Sure. The Nettie Jackson Award is extended every year to somebody who goes above and beyond in the school district. And this year, Ms. Sarah LeBlanc, she believes, as well as the committee for the Nettie Jackson Award, that that's you today.
Wow, can you read what you're...
Sure, sure, sure. So Damaris is the face of Greenberg School District. When a parent wants to register their child, Damaris is the first person they encounter. She is welcoming, involved, hardworking, and dedicated to the students and families of G C S D. More specifically, Damaris goes above and beyond for our immigrant families. Many immigrant families are hesitant to come to school, complete registration paperwork, and share their story with anyone. Damaris is able to communicate, comfort, and guide these families throughout the entire process. Additionally, she follows up, maintains relationships, and helps families find resources throughout the community. Damaris brings bridges between school, home, and the community, and is more than deserving of the Nettie Jackson extra mile award.
Is this all ready?
Yes, yes, okay. Thank you so much. I was not expecting...
We loved hearing about registration.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. I can't believe this. Thanks for telling me, Lisa.
You want to take a picture with Damaris? For the extra mile award? This is going to be...
See if you can see it.
Sorry. I was reading it while it's on, and it wasn't possible. But I'm glad you thought for it.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Please don't leave yet, because we have reception in a little bit.
Okay.
But, and when I introduce new hires, we don't have anyone here tonight. Trustees, if you don't mind, before we go to a five-minute recess or refreshment, I did want to acknowledge Ms. Lisa Raymond, because you did get tenure at a last meeting. You were not physically here, but you are. So we want to give you a clap as well. Um, same thing.
I have worked with you for a couple of years now, especially in the Finance and Facilities Committee. And you're really good.
Oh, you guys, you got me on your toes. Able to throw something together. You have anything you want to say?
No, not at all.
Okay. Off the top of my head, you've...
What a good top, really.
Say you've been with us through some good times and some tough times, and we just really appreciate your work, and we wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
So we wanted to welcome to the family. Wanted to say officially, welcome to the family.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna break for five minutes to have a reception in honor of Ms. Lugo, our retirees, our new hires, and Ms. Raymond. Okay, thank you. We'll head to the conference room at eight twenty-five for Lisa's presentation.
American Girls needs to be added to the website for the list of yes, okay.
Are you ready?
You ready?
Yes, you ready?
Yep.
Ready, okay. We're calling meeting by order at 8:30 PM. Next up is our policy presentation. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Mr. President, Ms. Smith.
The following policies were reviewed by the board at the last work session and are now being presented to the public. They will be considered for board adoption at the July 2nd meeting. Copies of these policies are available online in Board Docs as well as in the District Clerk's office. Any comments concerning these policies should be submitted writing to the Board of Education at the following email address: board@grebergcsd.org. The policies our are, excuse me. Policy 6160, Professional Growth Staff Development. Policy 6213, Registration of Professional Learning. Policy 7511, Immunizations of Students. Policy 7553, Hazing of Students. And Policy 8220, Career and Technical, and parentheses, Occupational Education. That's all.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the Code of Conduct. We're gonna have a discussion. We did receive an email as well from a community member around our Code of Conduct. I don't know if our student ex-officials have seen our Code of Conduct at all. No, it's a really long enti- this document. We know you guys have finished high school, so you may not wanna read it, but we would love for any feedback. We're leaving it over, we're not voting on it tonight. So maybe we can get them a copy, I don't know. You would definitely like to look at the cellphone section and look at that's in the Code of Conduct. We now have a nice chart in there that looks at progressive discipline in regards to certain behaviors. And it's important to know, you know, for your classes leaving, but for the students who remain, the standards that were charged to set for behaviors. Does anyone have any comments about our Code of Conduct? It's been open. Okay, I think we're gonna have it on the next agenda for voting. And this is a ongoing document that's consistently going to be updated and then presented to the board for approval at future meetings because it can be edited.
It's a work in progress.
Work in progress, yes. Okay, I'm trying to see, we have it here in the document. Can I send Ivy from the agenda? Can I send them?
They can actually, if they go onto Board Docs, it's available to the public.
Okay, so the students can get it that way, okay. Do you wanna say something about it, trustee Val?
Yes, I did, how could you tell? So just for the general public, if you want to see it online, if you're on the district's website, I'm not sure if this is the easiest way to get there, but I was sorry, step through it quickly. The top banner, go to Board. And then on the top banner, go to Meetings. At the next part of the website. And then on the far right, you will see an item called Documents. And you'll see there the Draft Code of Conduct 2024. And that's where you can view the document. And again, if there are comments, please email them to board@grebergcsd.org as soon as possible because we won't be voting on it soon.
Ivy, the new, the code that's on our agenda, is that the new one with the chart in it?
No.
No? Okay. So how do we get them, the students, the one with the chart in it? I feel like I just looked at it, was it on a packet?
It was a separate packet.
Oh, okay. Okay, I feel like, I'm like, I know I saw it. Here it is, disciplinary chart, got it.
Will the chart be incorporated by the time of final version for voting?
Oh, that's a good question.
I don't know. Right now, the, do you mean?
Will be in the document.
Not until we put the changes in it.
So the?
It will be placed in once it's ready to be inserted in with all the additions and comments that we need to add to it. It's right now, all the building levels with them to add comments and.
So can we share this with the students?
This is shared, sure, it's just not.
So the, sorry, let me understand, so the version we'll be voting on to adopt for now will be the draft that's currently there? And then the changes that we've been mentioning will be incorporated for next year, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, and we're looking to hopefully get those done over the summer.
How do I get this off of Board Docs to send to the students?
I can do it.
You're gonna do it?
I'll save it as a PDF and send it later.
Okay, thank you. So we're just sending the chart. It's not really homework, did you guys, you don't have a lot of tests going on right now anyway? Maybe one, two, maybe? Okay. So, but it is important to look at, you, what, you have physics?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's kind of it, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So, don't stay up too late, okay? So, all right, so you can look at this chart, but it is important to know, if you do look at the larger document a little bit, just to know, like, if you go to college or go to work, any job you have, any school you go to is gonna have a whole policy, a whole bunch of policies, right? And so you're responsible to behave within those policies even though, you know, you don't read every single word of them usually. So, um, it's important to know what they are and how to look at them. Okay. Anyone else have any comments, questions, concerns? No, we got an email from a community member that talked about, I'm spelling. I'm gonna forward it to, I guess, Ivy, yeah? And then also, they talk about the vaping nicotine should also be added to the line that talks about smoking and chewing tobacco. Does anyone chew tobacco anywhere in their schools? They do?
I don't know in schools, but they do.
I guess we better leave it then.
Yes.
Okay. Smoking, chewing tobacco, vaping nicotine. If those ca- in those cases, they could also benefit from parent conferences with the nurse for discussion, discussing cessation programs, like programs to stop smoking or to at least reduce it. So that was a suggestion, I'll make sure that.
I have it.
Okay. Forward it now to Ivy, so I don't forget. As well, in the Board of Education. Okay, so next for meeting, we will be discussing the Code of, I mean, adopting the Code of Conduct as is, unless there's any other comments or changes. Do I, I guess we need to table C1 because we're not gonna be opening an hearing, right?
Is that closing here?
They're closing the hearing.
Did I get a motion to open it? I didn't get it?
We opened it like a month or so ago.
Oh, well then, can I, motion C1 to close the public hearing, please?
I move that we close the public hearing on the district Code of Conduct.
Second.
Is we properly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, so our hearing was open for, was that right?
Thirty days.
She can take her public hearing discussion.
Okay. Now we need to open a public hearing for a district-wide safety plan.
I move that we open the public hearing on the district-wide safety plan.
I guess, is we properly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, we are now, have our hearing open for the district-wide safety plan. So your district-wide safety plan is also in the agenda, it's also public content. And this is also several pages long. So, student board members, you can also look at this. We have individual safety teams on each, wait, I thought, individual safety teams at each school that participate in evaluating and look at these safety plans, right? Are there any questions, comments, or concerns right now? No? If any come up in the interim, please speak up. Maybe we'll leave this open until?
It's required to be kept open for a minute, sorry. It's required to be kept open for a minimum of thirty days. I think the plan for Ms. Raymond is to close it in early September or work sessions.
Okay.
And adopt, and then submit the statement.
What's the date for the statement, number first?
October.
October 1st, okay. All right, next item on our agenda, our committee reports, are there any committee reports to see, right?
Yes.
Trustee Warner, sorry.
Well, no, no, let her go first.
Okay, you go first.
Sorry. The Audit Committee met yesterday, June 17th. This call to order at 10:02. Attendees were Lisa Raymond, Amy Ashley Moore, David Warner, Chris Vallon, Linda Lee, Erin Schwartz, Julia Long, and Ally Taglia from RS Abramson Company. We adopted the May 23rd, 2024 meeting minutes as amended. We reviewed the draft internal audit or risk assessment report. Various comments were made regarding observations which may be already resolved within the district. Feedback will be given for the district response before the report is finalized or presented to the public. We discussed proposals for an intensive review and decided auditors should review the state aid and grants. Tentative choices for upcoming years are information technology, which would encompass student data reporting in the next school year and facilities capital projects and capital assets the following year. Please, the suggested outline of areas for intensive review is subject to change by the Audit Committee in each individual school year as needs may change. The external or independent audit preliminary work has begun and auditors will be on site the week of August 26th. We are on track for a timely presentation to the Board and upload in October, November. We are still awaiting the draft audit reports from New York State Office of the State Comptroller regarding the tax or share area reserve accounts and the time and use in the Buildings and Grounds Department. Board members may have seen an addendum to the minutes. Board members may have seen an email today from the Office of the State Comptroller, but we are, the business office is still questioning what they've sent us, so that draft report is going to be amended, most likely. I think that's all for now, we adjourned at 11:21.
Wonderful, are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Sure, so we're supposed to have a turnaround on a corrective action plan. I think it's thirty days after when they get done with their last draft, is that correct?
For the internal audit report, but we won't get the final version until, sorry.
The State Comptroller.
Thirty days when we get the final report.
They're requesting an answer by mid-July, however, the business, Ms. Raymond, would you like to reply to this?
Sure, so the report that you received today still had errors in it.
It did?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
They didn't correct some of the items they cited us on that we provided proof for. Amy finally was able to get in touch with them today to go over it again. And they agreed that they hadn't changed this, these items, and they were preparing to do so. Because I can speak with the head, believe, they know that board meetings over the summer are not as strict as during the year. They'll give us the lead way there.
Okay. Yeah, that was my concern, that we don't end up in the middle of August, we're supposed to have.
And not be able to give response.
Right, because then we have a bad meeting, right?
Okay. Any other committee reports? Trustee Allen? Nope, no. Trustee Warner and I'm on, okay. Whoever wants to go first, because I call Warner, he says, pick somebody else.
Okay. The Technology Committee met on Thursday, June 6th at 1:00 PM. Attending were David Warner, Chris Vallon, Dr. Linda Iverson, Kelly Verdena, Luke Johnson, and Katie McKee. We, one, adopted the minutes of the 4/11 meeting as amended. Two, reviewed progress on website migration to the Ed Leo Content Management System. Content migration is complete, and beta testing will be done in July. The app for your phone is in development, so we're going forward. Three, to promote a unified look and feel for the district website and ensure regular updates, the Technology Department recommends we have a dedicated person to manage the website and act as a liaison to Ed Leo. The person could be assigned other duties provided that civil service job description issues can be resolved. I don't know if you can come up with a part-time position and then have, you know, one job description that goes with that and a part-time for another, I'm not sure how that works, but, you know, you could have somebody who's working on the website. Four, reviewed the status of technology items from the proposed safety project. The budget passed, therefore the additional security cameras are in, along with upgrades to the sound system in the auditorium. The Verizon extender does not require any additional firewall, so we'll use that option to improve Wi-Fi at Woodlands. Expect installation in July or August. A Motorola grant is pending for the radios, we wanna give our security, yeah, folks, and will be submitted in June. The swipe card access points may be done depending upon leftover funding. I think we're spending a lot of funding on upgrading the bathrooms, so we'll see what's left in that pot of money. The access points and remote buses providing access to the art wing and the breezeway are done. Five, there are two servers on site that are scheduled to be phased, there are two servers on site that are scheduled to be phased out and replaced by servers at an Elric site this summer. On May 16th, one of the servers failed. The server hosted the Mitel Voice Over IP system, which caused external callers to be unable to contact the district. Mitel was moved to the remaining server and service was restored. At the same time, there was a certificate issue with light speed firewall and web filter, which was also resolved. In the unlikely event that the remaining server fails before it's replaced this summer, we will complete our migration to the Elric site thoroughly. Redundantly, we will be built into the servers at that site to minimize any future problems. Six, Raptor issue, why is Raptor down so often? Is the Raptor support group responsive to service calls? Are we having connectivity issues? Raptor is responding to service calls when they are made. Most problems can be fixed by rebooting the machines and logging in. Security personnel have been trained how to do this. It is possible that we could create a script to automate the reboot process. We'll work on that possibly over the summer. Seven, the digital equity survey was completed in January of this year. There were 340 responses. Most individuals have access to the internet, use Chromebooks at home, but there are other devices, they have other devices available. All responses to the digital survey, however, are currently digital. So that means you must have a device in order to complete the form. We suggest that paper copies be sent home for the next survey and that the surveys be sent home by November of next year, so that the people who don't have access can fill out the form. Eight, our current one-to-one device strategy is currently to collect and refurbish Chromebooks at the end of the year. Otherwise, a large number of service requests will happen in September after everybody's beat up their Chromebooks for the year, and then there'll be a glut, and they'll be stuck behind, it'll be a long, it can take a long time for them to work off the glut, which means students won't have laptops for a while. We should have a process by which students can request that they be allowed to retain their laptops during the summer. We'll also check whether there is a digital component to the summer reading program. Meeting adjourned at 26:00 PM. That's one committee meeting.
Are you gonna read all the minutes, David, trustee Warner?
I'm going to read the safety committee minutes. You want me to read the safety committee?
Not all the minutes, maybe share the minutes and read the highlights?
The Safety Committee met on Thursday, June 13th at 5:15 PM in the Woodlands Innovation Lab and via Zoom. Attending were Tracy Mares, Kiana Washington, David Warner, Lisa Raymond, Dennis Puplis, Luke Johnson, Kelly Verdena, Will Washington, Tara Standbeck, and Victoria Bolton. I won't talk about, I adopted the minutes. I won't talk about the security vestibule and how, and how it's gonna, it's gonna be in place by September. I won't talk about the. The security garage deck, it's the same as any other report. Basically, I won't talk about vape detector, okay? There'll be a vape detector, that's gonna be installed in the lounge. Policy 6190, no, not gonna do anything. The committee adjourned to executive session to review the Workplace Violence Prevention Survey. This is included in the 412 Board Packet, if you want to look at it. We came back to open session, and the board members suggested we have an event or convene a subcommittee of the Community Engagement Communications Committee to gather feedback on the topic of respect. And we'll take that under advisement and send forward to other committees and see what they want to do. Meeting adjourned at 7:22 PM.
What's important to know, I don't know if the student ex-officials heard, that there's vape detectors now up running?
Oh, yeah.
In the student lounge?
No.
No.
No, you didn't have. There are vape detectors elsewhere in the building. And they will forward emails, alerting people if they don't, if they detect anything, right? The vape detector in the student lounge, they ordered it, they haven't installed it yet.
Don't say that.
Can I, can I just suggest that we don't discuss where they are or are not?
I didn't.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you, trustee Warner. And next, oh, no, any, oh, yes.
There's a, there's a, there's a finance and facilities meeting.
Oh, yes, okay.
On the, on 6/20, that's this Thursday, at 6:30 PM, right here in Innovation Lab. Thank you.
Do not come to us. Do you have a CEC report?
The next CEC meeting is on Monday, June 24th, 7:00 PM, Oinsel.
Okay. Trustee Long, wellness?
The next. I can be precise. The next Wellness Committee is Thursday, June 20th at 12:30 PM. It is expected to be the last Wellness Committee of the school year. I would like to say a special thank you to the Business Office. Our request for bid for food service management companies was completed and closed. We had two bidders that went through the full process and multiple that were interested, so thank you for drumming up the extra. It was, I think everybody was very happy with that result, so.
All right.
That's it.
Okay, all right. Yes, trustee.
Do we know where on Thursday?
No.
Okay.
Free low probably, I have to take this.
Okay, sorry. I'll confirm that. It is hot, you know, free low, right? Next, if we have more community reports, our next report is student ex officio. Do you guys wanna give a report this evening?
Sure, so we only have any comments, but mainly just like a few things that happened.
Okay.
Recently, it was the senior sunrise, that was a huge sunset. It was a good, it was a great success where families of the students, we got to come out, everyone had good food, everyone got to hang out. It was all a really good event that we were able to start.
Oh, yeah, so also, we just went on a senior trip, which was a lot of fun. I think we had like fifty something senior sessions. It was only, what, I would say, two days maybe, but everybody had a lot of fun. It was nice, like a little last moment for the class of 2024. And we got our phones, take it at night. And I just wanted to put that out, like, everyone did put away their phones, so that it wasn't an issue with that, so.
Was that a difficult adjustment?
It was.
It was. But you did it, we survived. Any other updates? When is your graduation?
The 26th.
Next Wednesday at 5:00 PM here on campus. And so. Do you guys wanna tell us, since you've been with us all year, what you're doing after graduation?
I'll be attending the Cooper Union for Chemical Engineering next year.
Probably go to UMass next year.
Wonderful, wonderful, what are you gonna study?
Books.
Wonderful, so we'll hear from you guys. And that reminds me now with my report to talk about the graduations that are upcoming. So we have the middle high school March graduation, all the board members are expected to attend. We have all the admin there, people from the community, obviously families come out. And that's on the 26th at 5:00 PM. Our JBL has their graduation this Friday, the 21st at 10:30-ish? Okay, thank you. 10:30 AM, and I will not be able to make that, I have to work. So trustee Allen will be giving her first graduation speech, she's so excited.
Anyone concerned, it will be short, because it's gonna be hot.
It will be short and sweet, because. And then we also have, I know Leo Jackson had their moving up ceremony, I think it was yesterday, right? Monday. And then, Hive View? What? Oh, eighth grade also, I'm sorry, I did not, I did skip over. Eighth grade has their recognition, thank you, I, what's on eight AM? And then following, that would be the, our JBL graduation.
Might be 8:30, I'm not sure.
And then Hive View is having their moving up, which day?
It is.
You know, I know you know.
Yes, it is.
The 24th?
The 24th.
The 24th, but it's in the, I think the 25th, because the grade is split over two days. But there are concerns about the heat and it potentially being canceled?
Might be canceled or rescheduled or.
Yes, so there's been parent requests for some creative problem solving to see if there's other spaces, especially since the grade is split, if there are places to work with, but.
So we have a week of coming up, great graduations and fun stuff tomorrow. Dr. Iverson is not coming to work, it is Juneteenth, the whole district is closed, okay? Say that together, the whole district, the unitis. So no one's coming to work or to school tomorrow to celebrate Juneteenth. And then we're back at it on Thursday for less than a week until closing of all of the schools. And that will be it. Next on our agenda, our public comments, are there any public comments? Nope, not at all. And we're going back into executive session, are you guys coming to the next meeting?
Yes.
Hopefully, yeah.
So then we'll say Juneteenth. Wonderful, thank you. And Ivy, a motion to, John, please, to executive session.
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss first of all, any brief negotiations, the employment history of particular persons, personnel matters on employee records and matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice from counsel.
Sorry.
If you're properly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, these several were in executive session, thank you. Yes, yes.
I just come in since, uh, I'm just a little more Manhattan. Yeah, I would have given it to you. Yes, I could, I could come back when I had it. Most of the time. My parents are, they, they wanted me to go to Manhattan College more. Just, just, just. That's good, that's really good. I, I'm just going into complete chemistry, I'm not sure if I'm gonna like it. That's good that you, 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 you're good at math, yeah.
Well, I mean, for the rest of the state, it's our position to not accept service. They accept service on the state of the district, especially regarding insert one.
It needs to be.
Amendment.
That's good. I see.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's night, it's night, Gabrielle, bye.
I'm going to go in the waiting room.
It's your first round of 28. I'm in school. You started school in 28? Thanks a lot.